Open the business meeting. Call to order, everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have a presentation, but no one here to present to, so we'll do public comment. Okay, no one's here for public comment. Consent agenda, does anyone have anything on consent they want to hold?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Kate, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no public hearings, no general business. Alright, we have a, we have a presentation. Officer Bell.
And we accept rowdy children in the room.
So Officer Barry was born and raised in Maine, and he joined the Air Force upon graduating high school. One weird thing about him, two weird things actually, is he doesn't go by his first name, he goes by his last name, Barry. And then the other thing is, he does not have an accent. So I have not figured out, and if I hadn't done his background myself, I'd think he was lying, but... So yeah, just a couple of interesting things about him. He served as an Air Force security officer for 11 years on bases in North Dakota, where he met his lovely wife Erica. Officer Barry decided to leave the Air Force to become a police officer. He got hired by the Watford City Police Department in North Dakota. For those of you who don't know, that's the Bakken Oil Fields way out, out kinda west, not missing much out there. And he, uh, he worked patrol, and most recently, he was a school resource officer, so he was a kid wrangler. Spent a lot of time chasing around oilfield workers and stray bison. I make that part up, I assume that's what he did. I don't know what else you do out there, but... Officer Barry, Erica, and his three, two children and one somewhere else, came to stay with their friends, uh, who lived here in Elkoona Market. They come here, uh, last few summers and stayed with them, and they actually fell in love with the town. So when Barry and Erica, when they decided to move to Minnesota, this is the only place that they actually applied. Barry's a big fan of baseball, which is perfect, because of course, we have two baseball teams here, and at least one I know made the playoffs to the other one.
They both made the playoffs and lost first rounds.
Okay, I'm sorry I brought that up. So Officer Barry, he completed field training, and he's been working solo patrol since June. He brings a wealth of experience, knowledge to the job, including working with juveniles. He's been a great addition, he fits in well, I think, with the community. Uh, he's got a quirky sense of humor, which fits great with the, with the department. We're all a bunch of goofballs at times, so, um, he's been doing really well, and I think he's been pretty well received by the community. So with that, I'd like to welcome Officer Barry aboard, and glad to have you with us.
Thanks Chief.
If we'd like to do the badge pinning?
Patrick, get to the other side.
Oh wait, maybe you have time. Want to join the mayor? Want to join the mayor? Don't be scared.
Alright, I'll hold this like that, so. Use your hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Daniel Blair.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution laws and ordinances.
To uphold the Constitution laws and ordinances.
And faithfully perform my duties as a police officer.
And faithfully perform my duties as a police officer.
Never betray my badge or the public trust.
Never betray my badge or the public trust.
Have the courage to and will hold myself and others accountable.
Have the courage to and will hold myself and others accountable.
Promote the vision and mission of the department.
Promote the vision and mission of the department.
Provide fair and impartial law enforcement.
Provide fair and impartial law enforcement.
Practice community values-based policing.
Practice community values-based policing.
Serve with pride, integrity, and excellence.
Serve with pride, integrity, and excellence.
And provide quality service to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And provide quality service to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Second, Mayor, if you could.
Craig, you wanna lead us off?
Yeah.
Please report.
Let's see if I can bring it up here. So I've included, um, I think in previous reports, the mention of the Spirit Pump Program. And this is through the BP here in town, and they approached us and wanted to look at a way to give back to the community, to be more involved in the city. Especially, it's, it's all new ownership and management there, all new employees. Actually, all of the employees live here in town, I don't know if everyone knew that. It's a national program, um, that is run through BP, so most of the BP's are privately owned. They're under the umbrella, obviously, of BP, and then BP has this program. And what they're looking at doing is, they would use images that you see here, and I'll go through them, but to actually brand, in essence, one of their pumps as an Elkoona Market Police Department Spirit Pump. And the proceeds from every gallon, um, from that pump, two cents would go to the Elkoona Market Police Department, to go to the city, and then ultimately to our department. And we would use it for officer safety things, um, body armor. You know, we actually carry tourniquets, different things like that. Safety vests even for when we're out on traffic stop, or on crashes, things like that. And then also for, um, community engagement, so our super popular badge stickers, those are surprisingly expensive, you know? So it'll help pay for things like that, Night to Unite, Shop with a Hero. So we'd be looking at using the proceeds for those. And then, we would obviously need to advertise the program, we'd have probably some kind of an event there, like a kickoff event, post stuff on social media, city newsletter, they would probably post on their social media. And then basically, what they would do is donate either every month, or maybe quarterly, whatever the proceeds are from that pump directly to the city. And then, um, the program, so, as you can see, the, this is what the design would look like on the pump. So you're gonna have, um, the toppers, the sides. And the nice thing is, anyone driving along County Road 2 would be, plain as day, would see that. And, so here is another view, what it would look like. So in essence, we're asking for your permission to use the logos, to use our emblems.
That's awesome.
And then currently, they do have these programs, Spirit Pump is in, um, has been executed at other stations throughout the country, primarily in Wisconsin. So here's an example of, of what one that's actually being used currently looks like. And then here would be another one. So what we're asking for is, is in essence, your permission to, to, to do this, to let them use our, our emblem. The pump would look like, like this, and then for us to accept their donation. I don't know how long this, there's no end date for this program. It just goes until they potentially say, "We don't wanna do this anymore." I can't say for sure how much the amount will be, it's gonna vary, obviously. You think potentially a couple hundred dollars a month, um, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you consider how expensive body armor is nowadays, things like that, I mean, every little bit helps.
How much are those stickers? You said they're expensive.
About a buck a piece.
Have you really?
Really? Wow.
Seventy-nine cents, I think, when we buy in volume.
Do we need a motion to approve this?
I like the design.
No, this is just direction, that you guys are okay with it. We'll bring back any action items that may be required, once we get into the, the nitty-gritty details of it, but we wanna make sure before we spend a lot of time on it, that you guys are okay with the gun, okay with it overall.
Is this just a BP-type of program?
Yep. Yeah, it certainly could be, so I don't know.
I mean, this is sort of competition.
Quick trip, yeah, they can do three cents.
Yeah, maybe soon, maybe soon Quick Trip will be doing it. I, I don't know, but, um, okay, well, we'll, uh, we'll work something up then to bring back. But we'll keep going. Then the other thing I have is, I wanted to give you guys a heads up. We are looking at purchasing a new squad in 2025, had been budgeted for. As you are probably all aware, the cost of cars has kind of skyrocketed. So we are under budget by about seven grand of what we were expecting. Keep in mind, we buy the basic vehicles, but by the time you upgrade and outfit with everything, it gets, it gets pretty expensive. So we're gonna be about seven to eight thousand dollars short, um, kinda projected at this point. We are looking at maybe buying a truck this time, instead of an SUV. The reason for that is, being in a squad for 10 hours a day is, is pretty kinda, it takes a physical toll on your body. The more room we have, the better, obviously, and if you've seen some of our officers, we have some pretty big, tall people in our department now, not me, but I'm big one-way nut. So, part of it is looking at other options for them, to make them more comfortable. Some of the other things where a truck would help out is, you guys are probably familiar, that tends to drift a little bit here in the winter, when we get snow. Obviously, the four-wheel drive would help us a lot on certain days to get through to emergencies, to even just drive on County 2, again, it's gotten pretty bad out here at times. Um, the, having a bed is nice, because there are some times where we would love to be able to close off roads because of a downed tree, or some kind of a hazard. Well, we can't get a barricade in the back of an SUV, but you can in the back of a truck. Or, we get a lot of found bikes down at Wagner Park that we have to go pick up, or things like that. It'd be nice to have a bed of a truck available. And then also hauling around, you'll start seeing it now with the school year coming up, we're gonna get the speed trailer back out, the one that shows the, the speeds. It's a little easier to haul things like that around with a truck. The truck is more expensive, it would be, uh, around about four thousand dollars more, because it takes some different equipment, trucks just are a little more expensive. But when you expense that out over the anticipated six-year lifespan of a squad, it's about seven hundred dollars more a year. So, kinda looking to make sure you guys would be okay of us pursuing possibly a truck versus an SUV, because obviously, it's a departure, you do see that Scott County has trucks. But it would be a departure for us, it'd be, you'd have the same emblems, same logos, the same everything on there. The other issue that we are going to run into is, when you order a government vehicle, they have windows, that they're called, and only from this time to this time can you order a 2025 interceptor truck. And the problem is, when you order during that window, trucks are now, and cars are caught up in production, that they will be shipped before 2025. And it is payment on delivery. So the issue we're probably gonna run into is that we would have to probably pay for this truck, or even SUV, because the SUV window is open right now, in 2025. So, wanted to prepare you guys to think about that, um, to see if there's any concerns, if you have any, "Don't do that, don't pursue this." But, right now, the window is not open, I can't order right now anyway, I can't order an SUV, I can't order a truck right now. But I wanted to make sure, see kinda where you guys are at, any issues with the truck, any potential issues if we had to buy it in 2025, or in 2024 versus 2025.
So as you, as you guys know, um, once it's in the budget, and if it's within the appropriate year, within the appropriate amount, we just handle the purchase administratively. So technically, if we're gonna have to buy it the year earlier, you guys have to authorize that purchase. The other thing is, when we talked about the adjustment in the budget related to squads, that did not include this. This was prior to having this knowledge, so what we're seeing is that the cost just continues to keep, we're, we're chasing the number within the budget. We'll probably have to sit down before we hit the final budget, and make some additional tweaks. We don't know what that looks like, this information just came up as Craig was getting numbers for the upcoming year, as the window, our pricing for the window just opened. So we're gonna be taking a look at that, so we wanted to make you aware of that as well. And then of course, there's the truck question, it's a little bit more expensive, there's a clear rationale for it. We've had the discussion on and off with both of Craig's predecessors over the years. And historically, they have, they actually used to be very, like, it was pretty close. The separation is starting to show up a little bit more. We, let's face it, you buy a truck, "Hey, how come those guys got a truck?" We wanna make sure that you're comfortable with it, can explain the rationale, before we go down that route. If it's something that you're not open to, then we'll stick to the squad approach, but...
I have no problem with the truck.
I have no issues.
Me neither.
Can you throw a bad guy in the bed?
Uh, I can, you may have to find a new chief, but sure.
Put a topper on it, nobody will know he's back there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep it hidden and quiet.
Well, there is, and those are things that we'll evaluate, topper would be an additional expense, but if you have a topper, you can go, "Here puppy," into the back of the truck, it's harder to do with a squad.
And when they poop, it's easier to clean out the bed.
That's what I'm thinking, that drunk you can throw in the bed and start to feel it.
Yeah, I don't hear any objections, so.
Uh, other than that, uh, things are going well, my guys are doing well, and, and we're just trucking along, and... Nice, thank you.
Tom?
So, administrative reports, um, second quarter financial report was included in your packet, there wasn't anything earth-shattering in it, so unless you have any specific questions, Kelly's here to also help answer questions. I'm hearing none? Uh, scale legislative priorities, I give everybody a heads up, that at this meeting, we were gonna be looking to respond to a survey that scale was gonna be sending out, um, to the general membership, one survey per organization, so put the administrators of each organization in the position of collecting feedback. As you can see, it's gonna take us probably five minutes to go through this, or less. It's a lot simpler than they'd originally made it sound, so... Question number two, in the past, scale has supported a number of capital investment projects requesting state funding for our communities. There was no capital bonding bill in the 2024 session. Scale should prioritize these projects in 2025, yes or no? So, for us in the future, it might be, for example, trying to get money for the interchange. In the past, it was for redoing a bunch of work, and through the downtown in Belle Plaine, that's been for floodplain mitigation, and, um, work, uh, work that they did in downtown related to the river and its erosion in the downtown area in Shakopee. There've been a number of projects over the years that, in different communities, and it's a little bit of, "We support you on this, and then you'll support us later." I think what they're really trying to get to is, should we continue to be doing this? Putting the emphasis on that, going forward, supporting everybody else's capital projects that have some sort of regional significance.
I say no. I, I just don't think there's, I don't know. I, I think it supports the notion of scale kinda being a big government entity of its own. The fact that we're talking about this at a council meeting, rather than like an actual scale presentation, kinda... I mean, there's gonna be some context that's gonna be missing, and that kinda irks me, but, I don't know. I don't know, does anyone else have opinions?
I'm just thinking about the bridge.
I think we'll still, we can still get support for the bridge.
And we'll get that through I identify solutions, we can get that through our neighbors outside of scale.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I'm neutral on that one.
I'm neutral, I'd go the other way.
Let's be no.
Let's, let's be no then.
Next question, scale should continue to expend lobbying efforts to retain local control over street improvement fees and maintain local control over affordable housing and zoning restrictions, yes or no?
I mean, I'm a hardcore no on the zoning restrictions and affordable housing. I, I, I understand the street side.
I mean, I think local control is good for some things, but I don't like the lobbying so much.
So, just so you know, if we had not, if scale specifically had not taken the lead at the legislature over like the last five years, we now would have no control over our lot sizes, our architectural standards. I mean, this is what that's talking about, this is the BATS-y stuff. Now, there may be elements of that, this is a broad statement and its intention.
That's what I don't like about it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, yeah.
I think the intent is they, the new, without knowing what the specifics are, it's philosoph, generally, are these something that we approach? The specifics of it get worked out by the executive committee when we look at specific things.
It's the same reason why I can't stand Metro Cities in the league, for what they're doing in some of this local control talk, and, and they, they spit out local control like it's the only answer, and they don't look at any other solutions. And, it's, it's just mind-boggling to me.
Yeah, but...
There's two sides to that.
Right, right, with what the DFL was trying to do, from my understanding, was take away a lot of our local control, and, in a way that I don't think was good for us.
Agreed.
I don't disagree necessarily, or, uh, with the blanket either way, I think is bad. I, I mean, I think taking away all local control is bad, I think maintaining all local control is bad, because cities do a lot of stupid things too, that make us all look dumb. And result in the state needing to take away local control.
So, I mean, we need someone to lobby on our behalf, I mean, whether it be our new mayor, or, I don't know.
And I think that cities should lobby on their own behalf, we don't need anybody else. I, I just feel, I struggle having to fall in line with Shakopee and Savage, and Fire Lake, and everybody else.
Right.
Our answer is, we need more detail, we can't answer yes.
Do you happen to know the latest on the street? We've been talking about street improvement fees, since I started this career 30 years ago, and it's gone nowhere.
It's because it gets killed in committee. There's been more discussion, but there, um, certain people in certain positions within committees just kinda made sure it never went anywhere from a discussion standpoint, and there's been different reasons. It's been out there for as long as I've been in the career, which is as long as you've been in the career, as well. There has been more interest in having a vet, a thorough discussion on the topic. Because, quite honestly, streets are like every other piece of infrastructure we have, like water, sewer, stormwater, and the idea of being able to approach that infrastructure similarly, there's a certain logic to it. There's been, uh, there's been opposition to it, there's a really strong opposition to it from the development community. In their mind, uh, the general taxpayers of the larger community should pay for those streets, and the discussions I've had with their representation from BATS-y, et cetera. So, that development doesn't pay for it, but it gets paid by somebody else after they've made their money and left. So, um, again, uh, the idea that should we have the ability, and it doesn't mean you have to do it as a city, it just says, as a city, you would have the authority to be able to do something. And what it exactly looks like, there's not a specific proposal, there's been proposals in the past, there's been proposals from the league, there's been proposals from scale, there's been proposals from any number of organizations. That's exactly what it, yeah.
Again, the street improvement fees, if it stopped there, I'd say yes, everything else, I'd say, heck no. I don't think that's where they're wrong. Because there's, it's gonna vary so dramatically between communities, and those that are leading those communities, and what they want.
Correct, but this is saying that you should have the ability within that community to make those decisions, and not have it be dictated to you, or remove your ability to, to do it.
I, I mean, the question says, scale should continue to expend lobbying efforts. I mean, I think the bigger discussion is, what are we lobbying for? And if we as a county can't get together on what we're lobbying for, then I don't think scale should be footing the bill for it. But, but there are some things in which I think there is a benefit for, and...
Most of those lobbying effort, those lobbying efforts to date primarily have been to stop things that we would, that we would have, and have as a council been adamantly opposed to.
Right.
It wasn't a blanket, "We're gonna oppose anything," but it was against specific bills, portions of specific bills that have come forward.
Right.
So remember these statements, these aren't like, here's the specific legislative platform, they're asking...
Scale uses it, and that's how Metro Cities uses it, and that's how the league uses it. This gives them permission to argue against any one of these, and they'll just pull the local control card, that's it. So they're, they're not looking at the specifics.
Except unlike the league or Metro Cities, scale's membership decides the very detail of it through the executive committee. And we have had input, in fact, Joe's been consulted on letters that have been sent on those very lobbying efforts in the past. So I agree, these are broad statements, but to some degree, I would argue that they can't be super specific, like this is the specific, because we don't know what the legislative situation is coming up. With scale, you have a much smaller group that we have actual influence with, or a greater degree of influence, to look, to look at the details of how that's implemented, as compared to, um, League of Minnesota Cities, which is like, what, 500 cities, and, you know?
Yeah, and I would argue staff doesn't follow any direction, period, so, yeah.
And, and there is no staff at scale, except the staff for the cities in a, a single lobbyist who takes direction. And quite honestly, on a lot of those efforts, the lobbyists may be doing work behind the scenes, but a lot of the actual, like hearings and stuff, is actual, it's, it's mayors and council members and staff members from, from those cities. So while I understand, I would argue that it's not exactly the same.
Would it be too much to ask to know what they're gonna lobby about, or like vote on it, or?
That comes later, they're trying to get this general feel at a high level, so they can put that together.
I mean, I don't mean right now, but I mean, like, if we think it's a good idea in general, but like going forward, before they lobby on a bill to know?
So...
Yeah, I mean, there, there, as part of the scale discussions, what the legislative priorities are, and how to actually go about them. And scale, as a group, kinda decides those.
What if we're like strongly opposed to them?
They'll still do without us, the same thing, I mean, we're debating a, an answer that every other city and every other township's gonna say yes to, so we're just wasting our time anyway?
Exactly.
So...
Yeah.
I agree.
Number, so what should be the answer on this?
Whatever.
Just don't leave it blank. If they can't be more specific in the question, we're not gonna be any more specific in an answer.
So, uh, scale has historically placed a very high priority on education provided our citizens. Whether this is in support of programming or school safety, scale should continue focusing efforts in this area.
I'm the wrong person to be talking to about scale, I am, I've really become anti-scale over the last two years. So I'm gonna say no to everything.
But they're out there and they're trying to help programming for our kids, or our citizens, as far as like when they were helping with the seniors and the...
I, I believe that this, looking at it, and I wasn't involved in the direct discussions of the development questions, this looks like, hey, should we do stuff on behalf of our school district members or not?
I don't even know what they mean by this.
I don't know the specifics of it, I think it was intentionally written very broad of anything that we might lobby for that might help the school districts.
Are they doing this because they're trying to figure out if they still need to keep their lobby person at scale?
No, I think what they're trying to do is like, not look at the specific lobby, but the topic areas. Should we be lobbying on school stuff? Should we be, you know, should we be spending any time in these effort areas or not? Not, not...
I don't think this is an area of scale, as much. I mean, I, number five, yes, business, economic development, for sure.
Scale is about combining resources to increase efficiency, it's not about making decisions as a county in this capacity. I don't know, I don't even wanna fill it.
Yeah, I think the blank.
What does it do?
They've asked us to respond, it's like anything else, you can do what you wanna do.
Don't do it.
I say don't, do it.
We've wasted enough time.
Just ignore it.
And what, and I will be asked why we didn't provide a response, and how should I respond to that? With the gist I'm getting is that the questions are too high-level, too vague, and not specific enough to give a response.
Yep.
Good response.
Because there's a lot of nuances, and there are aspects of it where we would say no, and aspects where we'd say absolutely yes.
That's a good answer.
Get anything more from administration?
Um, I do have a couple of quick updates, yes? Two quick updates, um, staff had a meeting with Niagara this morning, two parts to it. One, uh, one, a portion of the meeting, other than just general construction project updates, coordination, those types of items, is they did indicate, they did make a request for some flexibility in their operating hours related to some aspects of the construction. Staff will be evaluating that pursuant to our past discussions, I will be updating the council after staff has had a chance to review it, with our thoughts on that, um, before I make a decision with regards to that, to get any feedback you guys might, might have. Second item is, they've advised us that they have, um, high... Um, second item is they've advised us that they have, um, hired or selected the facility manager. And it is a local resident. The announcement is forthcoming. We do not know who it is.
Do they give any reason to wanna adjust the hours, like at all?
Being able to get work done by the time things get too cold, um, trying to weigh the cost of, the, the, the cost of it, which for one specific request could be like a million dollars worth of cost difference. And the trade-off between, um, ripping the Band-Aid, so a little more incon, more inconvenience over a shorter period of time or having inconvenience over double the length of time. So I'll go through the details of that with you guys. We were presented with the information. We need to evaluate it internally. So I don't wanna get into it here because I would be speaking appropriately at this point.
Okay.
But we'll be evaluating that.
Okay.
Anything else for administration?
No.
Okay. Reports. Um, skip around a little bit. Engineering? Awesome. Community development?
Um, I too have a couple of things to report. We have a planning commission meeting tomorrow about Tuesday. We'll be talking with the planning commission, presenting them with the draft ordinance, or cannabis ordinance related just to zoning, not licensing issues. Yours will bring at your next meeting. Sorry, um, feedback.
So subtle.
I'll be, uh, we'll be bringing that to you as well before we go out for public hearing on that in September. Um, we will also be, uh, working on the detached, continued work on the detached accessory structures, zoning ordinance amendment and, um, a minor amendment regarding tree requirements and landscaping. I had advised Kate before the meeting, but the city has been noticed by the Department of Natural Resources Metropolitan Council that we need to adopt, will be required to adopt a shoreline ordinance within approximately the next twelve months. We don't have a choice about that. Uh, so we are already, it is a model ordinance. We're gonna try to push it off, uh, as probably, you know, through, towards the end of the twelve-month period because it does have some pretty serious im- implications, uh, for various properties in the city, so. And then we met with a group that will be representing, um, potential development on a three-acre site just west of Dakota Acres Townhouses and north of the new apartment building. There's three point one acres. We have a group that is trying to move that development forward, sounds like with, uh, by next spring. So we'll be working on that. Um, and then we are working with, um, on Park I thirty-five, the, looking at the possibility of getting that site certified through deed as a shovel-ready site, just give some marketing potential to the site.
Um, C C E C.
Linda. First of all, we have skipped around a couple, and there's one on here that's really important that we do.
I'm gonna cover all of them. I'm just bouncing around. I figure I'm just gonna go to people that are in the room and then we'll.
Okay, all right, I got it. Um, just a quick little update on our meeting that we held on Tuesday at C C E C. We had a s- a super guest. Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Arianna Burmeister came to our meeting and proposed a micro gallery. What this is, is a little box that businesses would donate to have m- made. And inside these boxes would be, um, art projects from local schools, from New Prague and Lakeville. And they would like these displayed at our tree lighting event in December to bring more people in on that event. And then possibly ta- have the businesses take these boxes back to their businesses to showcase, um, the students' artwork, so.
No objection.
And we talked about the community picnic. Reminder that is that's the Saturday. Anybody that is available, please come and join the fun, eleven to one thirty. And we also did discuss a little bit of the Halloween party. The Halloween party is on a date that absentee voting has to be taking place and be open at City Hall. So I won't be available for the Halloween party. I'll be here doing absentee voting, but I have two good representatives that are gonna represent me there, and we're gonna try and get tons of volunteers to work the event to have a successful event, so. That is it.
Linda's set us up for success over many years, so.
Thank you, Amanda.
And a reminder that the community picnic is Saturday. Oh, you did, okay.
Thanks for listening, Tom.
I. I'm so good at it.
Joe's on fire today.
My wife reminds me of it every day.
I have no scale reports. Is there anything for service delivery?
Continued discussions. I already gave council updates on it in our one-on-one bi-weeklies, um, related to the insurance consortium. That was the big topic. So that's continuing to move forward. We're gonna try and move to the next phase where we actually look at what it'll take to set it up. Sounds like the earliest that it would happen would be twenty twenty-six, possibly twenty twenty-seven, just based on the practical timing of, of working through it.
I thirty-five?
Next meeting is September twelfth.
All right, and I skipped over Public Works, Fire Department, and Parks. Is there something in particular you would wanna bring up on them, or does anyone have an update for them?
I do, so, um, Fire Department is looking at doing a house burn on the old Coolman House next to City Hall. Uh, they are required to notify the council of it and make sure that it's included in the minutes. So I am noticing the council that they will be conducting the burn on the house on September twenty-eighth.
Hence why Linda was so insistent that we, got it.
Are we gonna put it on Facebook or let anyone know, or just kinda do it?
We will write before the event and let people know that we will be conducting something in the area so that people don't call
Right.
in, but we don't want to advertise it to the point where people are coming with coolers and chairs to watch what's going on.
That's what happened regardless, happened with the last one as well.
Okay.
But.
Let's all show up and tell you.
What day?
September twenty-eight. But, uh, the intent is it's gonna be a multi-agency practice burn. Because of its proximity to City Hall, we actually have the facilities and staging area on the weekend to be able to actually do, um, you know, a joint training event. So it's, it's, it'll, it'll be a big deal.
Yeah. And nothing for Public Works and Parks?
Nothing beyond reports.
Any discussion by council? Or motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Gina. I'll in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.